But if you know, once you truly submit it to us.
The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on June 13th, 2023, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners' Court Room at County Administration Building, 200 South Texas 70, Suite 106. Public may watch the meeting live on Facebook and Brazos County. This meeting will be conducted by video conference with at least a quorum of Commissioners' Court members participating in person at the County Administration Building. We have Commissioner Aldrich, who is attending via Zoom. First item on the agenda pledge is the invocation pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, Commissioner Barry Willito.
Almighty, thank you for this day and the many abundant blessings you bestow upon us. Grant us wisdom that our work today on behalf of the citizens of Brazos County be pleasing to you. Please continue to watch over and protect our military first responders and frontline workers to keep them out of harm's way, as the work they do keeps us free. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and our concerns. First citizen, Brian Cahill, come on up.
Good morning. My name is Brian Cahill. I'm here representing Greenleaf Lane. I'm here because our request for the county to continue maintenance on the dedicated and accepted public portion of Greenleaf has not been resolved. I'm here to add some additional information to the discussion. One of the county's statements has been that Greenleaf was only accepted up to the cul-de-sac, so I'm going to show why that is not true. On March 11th, 1985, the Commissioners' Court approved the subdivision regulations for Brazos County. These regulations were in effect in the Rustic Oaks Plaid Acceptance in 1986 and Road Acceptance in 1988. The following statement is made in these regulations. Where a dead-end street is designed to be so permanently, a cul-de-sac should be provided at the closed end, having outside roadway diameter of 100 feet. Dead-end streets may be platted where the Commissioners' Court and county engineer deem desirable, and where the land adjoins property not subdivided, in which case, the street shall be carried to the boundaries thereof. The regulation states that the dead-end streets require cul-de-sac, which is created on Greenleaf. They also state that if a dead-end street adjoins property yet to be subdivided, that the roads are required to be carried to the edge of the subdivision. At the time of the plat and road acceptance, the private section of Greenleaf Lane had yet to be subdivided. Thus, a compliant subdivision would have to extend the county-owned portion of Greenleaf Lane to the edge of the subdivision. The Commissioners' Court Minutes from 1988 state, having met all the subdivision regulations, on a motion by Commissioner Beer, seconded by Commissioner Wilcox, the court voted unanimously to accept for maintenance the roads in Rustic Oaks subdivision. Since the roads in Rustic Oaks were in compliance with the subdivision regulations, that would mean a cul-de-sac was on Greenleaf Lane, Greenleaf was extended to the edge of the subdivision, both the cul-de-sac and the extension would be roads within the subdivision which were accepted in 1988. I'll say it just one more so we all get it. So, the roads were in compliance with the subdivision regulations. That would mean there was a cul-de-sac on Greenleaf Lane. That would mean that Greenleaf was extended to the edge of the subdivision, and that both the cul-de-sac and that extension were part of the county roads accepted in 1988. The residents are not asking the county to maintain the private portion of Greenleaf. We are asking the county to resume maintenance on the dedicated and accepted public portion of Greenleaf up to the property boundary as located by Strong Surveying and Dr. Stacy Lyle. I say this because we keep hearing the statement that the county believes residents are trying to get them to maintain a private road, and that is not the case at all. Our initial request was to have Greenleaf on the agenda so we could hear your questions and feedback. Since we're not allowed to do that, I'm asking the county judge and the Commissioners, if you can send your requests our way, we'll address them in future meetings. Thank you for your time.
Good. Thank you. Lonnie McRae.
Hello, Commissioners. I hope you're all having a good day. I just wanted to let the veterans know that we're still on, looking into the Veterans Treatment Court process. We're still following up. We're still talking to people about resources. I also wanted to give you all some numbers, in case you weren't aware. Between OAF and OEF, Operation During Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, we've lost about 7,000 veterans, like 6,800 and some change, that died in those wars. Since then, we've lost over 30,000 to suicide. That's what leads veterans to become justice-involved. The depression, the wanting to end themselves, the self-medicating, the going out and just reckless behavior, a lot of TBIs result in veterans becoming justice-involved because it rattles their brain, it rewires how they think, they're not in control anymore. These veterans are just seeking whatever escape they can get from their own mind. And it's hard, because you can't ever escape your own mind. A lot of us deal with ghosts every day, our fallen brothers and sisters that are still there, and moments, you know, out of the corner of your eye, you see one, or you hear a sound and it just brings you back. I dealt with a lot of children in Afghanistan that were injured during the war. So, a lot of times, flu season's really hard for me, because a lot of crying little kids that are just, you'll go to a store and they're not feeling well, and sometimes their cries bring me back. I had to take care of, we had a mass casualty where it was six kids that were burnt really bad. That left a lasting mark on me, and I still struggle with it at times. You know, I have a son myself, and sometimes I just can't get that out of my head. A lot of veterans suffer with this kind of thing, and worse, a lot of them feel guilty about some of the things that we've had to do over there. You know, I don't know if you are aware of this, but in Afghanistan, especially when we are fighting the enemy, they're called MAMS, Military Age Males. They don't talk about this much, because it's bad publicity, but a lot of the people, or a good portion of the people that we're fighting over there are ages 13 and up, because those are men in their country. So, we are being forced to defend ourselves against these men. But, in our standards, in this country, they're not men. But, they're trying to take our lives, so in return, we have to make sure that doesn't happen. That leaves a lasting mark. I have very good friends that are special forces that can't even be around kids because of some of the things they've had to do. One of them, recently, he might become justice involved in this county because of an incident that happened post-TBI. He had a car accident. There was an issue that came up, and some stuff almost happened because of it, and he doesn't remember the day at all. It is so easy for veterans to become justice-involved, especially when we're fighting these wars in our head, these wars that'll never go away. That is why we need a Veterans Treatment Court. It's not for every veteran. Every veteran doesn't get in. There has to be some kind of disability that directly results into them becoming justice-involved. It's not about getting all vets to get a jail-free card. It's for a certain amount of vets. The docket's 30. You don't want more than that, because the quality goes down. You don't want more than that, because the veterans aren't getting the attention that they need. We want small dockets. We want precise medical services for these veterans and their disabilities. I hope, well, I know everything is still working towards that. I know that you all are supportive of it. I know that this county is very supportive of its veterans. This county has a history so rich of veteran services. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. Anushka Kessabala, come on up.
Howdy. Good morning, everybody. My name is Anushka, and I'm a junior biomedical sciences major from Grapevine, Texas, and I also serve as the Outreach Director for Move Texas TMU. I come before all of you today to advocate for on-campus voter accessibility. Ever since my freshman year, one of my favorite buildings here at A&amp;M happens to be the Memorial Student Center. From getting a break between my classes to go study in the flag room, to grabbing Panda Express with my friends at the food court after a meeting, the MSC was always home-based to make that happen. The MSC has always provided myself, along with my peers at A&amp;M, the resources that we need to get through our long days on campus, including the ability to cast our ballots. With the MSC being removed as a polling location, it infringed upon that voter accessibility. It wasn't as easy as walking from the aisle CB to grab a quick bite from the food court. You had to make time to go off-campus in between a busy schedule consisting of classes, work involvements, work involvements in student organizations, and other obligations to figure out a method of transportation to go vote. And there are many students who don't have a personal vehicle to go to the polls, especially the plethora of on-campus freshmen who live in the dorms. They rely on those campus resources in order to get things done in their busy schedules. There are also students who are physically disabled and rely on the proximity of campus resources to ensure that their needs are met. With that being said, the removal of the MSC as a voting location, or as a polling location, was an act of voter disenfranchisement held liable by this very court that I'm standing in front of today. On Election Day, there was a line of, there was a line of students wrapping around the staircase who went to go vote at the MSC. This goes to show that there are students who are passionate about making their voices heard. By reinstating this polling location, voting can be as easy as walking from your organic chemistry class in the aisle CB to grab lunch with your friends. I appreciate all of you for listening and for also providing us the platform to represent the community around us. Thank you.
I am here to also advocate for the MSC.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you state your name?
Oh, my name is Karen Riedel. I am retired. I did work at A&amp;M, off and on, for 25 years. I have worked as a poll worker at the MSC for the last five or six elections. We are always the last ones in to bring our ballots in. The MSC voting stays open till 9:00, as she remarked. The lines are around the building, out into the aisles. We've had to have police protection come, or just to help organize. So, the MSC has probably had one of the most active voting polls in the county. We talk about students, and obviously, I think that's a primary concern, but heretofore, 25 or 30%, and this is just my rough guess, were professors and all sorts of staff members, from janitorial on throughout, you know, department heads and deans. So, I think that, that having 70,000 students and having a place for them to vote, and for having the staff and faculty an ability to vote, that they can do it between classes, they can do it at lunch, is, to me, it's mind-boggling that this is not, this is not even, this is an issue. In opening the polls at 7:00, we usually have janitorial staff there waiting for us, because they're either between shifts and working at 4:00 in the morning, or it's just convenient for them. So, I think that keeping the MSC as a valid place is mandatory, and I think it's voter disenfranchisement if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the list that we had for public input. We'll move on to number three, presentation and discussion, presentation of 2023 Chamber Day survey results by Glenn Brewer, President and CEO, with Brian College Station Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Judge, and Commissioners. I'm very, very pleased. I am Glenn Brewer, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm happy to be here representing our Board of Directors and over 1,600 paid members of businesses in the Bryan College Station market. I'm a little concerned that it's already been another year. Time flies, but I am very, very happy to be here to present the Chamber Day 2023 Business Survey Results to the Commissioners' Court. Before I talk numbers, just a quick thank you, if I could, to Commissioners Aldrich and Barry for their participation in our Legislative Affairs Committee the Chamber has, as we put together different governmental entities with our business leaders, and put together our legislative action plan for our federal and state governments. I also want to appreciate and thank Commissioner Barry for serving on our DC delegation as we go and present these action items that are not only for the local business community, but for our local governmental entities as well, as we try to make this a successful place for businesses in Bryan College Station. Our 15th Annual Chamber Day was a great success. We appreciate the sponsorship of Brazos County. I'm here to announce, we had 175 volunteers show up at Chamber Day. We put them in 50 different committees. We try to put first responder with as many committees, teams, excuse me, as we can. We were able to visit 1,102 Brazos County businesses this year, and we have data from over 730 of those businesses participated in our survey. For, I know the court knows this, but for anyone who may be new, what we actually do when these 50 teams come in here, they will get a map of Brazos County. They will have their section given to them, and their team will go to that section, and they will find and walk in as many businesses as they have time to see or that they can locate. And when they go in there, they will thank them for being in business in Brazos County. They're going to thank them for their investment in the business that they put here. They're going to thank them for the taxes that they pay. They're going to thank them for their employees, our friends and neighbors that they hire, and we're going to thank them for the goods and services that they provide our county. And that's the main reason why they're there. It's a big thank you to our businesses. Also, we're going to ask them to complete this business survey, because, as I've said before, when you walk into these businesses, you could be walking in and talking to an A&amp;M or Blend student that's their first day at work, or you could be talking to a mom and pop that's been there for 40 years. But, when you go into over 1,100 businesses and you talk to these people, you aggregate all their answers together, you're going to get a pretty good viewpoint of what these businesses are thinking right now. And with that, I'll jump into our presentation. These are, these are the questions that we ask at our business survey and the answers that they got in general. First of all, we always ask, compared to the previous 12 months, you know, how have sales changed? And this year, we're pleased, about 56% of the businesses we visited said their sales had increased. 14%, only 14% decreased, and 25% stayed the same. We'll break that down in a minute, but just flipping through with the actual questions. On our local economy, we ask, what do you expect the local economy to do? This is a forward-thinking question. What do you think, as a businessperson, is going to be happening in the next 12 months? And 61% of the businesses we visited think the local economy is going to increase in the next 12 months. 11% decrease, and 22% stay the same. The next question we ask, which is an important question, do you expect the number of employees to change over the coming year? 45% of the businesses we visited said they expect to increase the number of their employees in the coming year. Only 3% said they expect to decrease their number of employees, and 49% basically half said they anticipate on staying the same. The next question we ask on the applicants, how do you rate the quality of qualified applicants in our area for your type of business? Sometimes this can be a little confusing, because what we're specifically asking them is the quality of the qualified applicant. So, not whether you're getting applicants or not, not whether you're able to hire, but when you're getting these applications in, you know, what do you feel about the quality of those applicants? And 45% said that they feel the quality of the applicants are good, 33% average, and 13% poor. And then, one of my favorite questions always is the quality of life. Outside of your business, how would you rate the quality of life here in the Brazos Valley for you and your staff? And 48% rated the quality of life excellent, 39% good, 9% average. There was 1% out there that said poor, and a couple percent did not answer. With that, if you'll continue through your packet, you can see how we have taken these questions, and there's a couple more questions that I will get to at the end. But, these main questions, we have divided out into, by industry. We have a three-year spread, so you can see, you can take your own time to go back, analyze, and evaluate. I'll just mention one thing briefly on each of those, but you can go through and look and see the different industries and how their answers have changed over the coming years. Overall, when you look at the spread of '21 to '22 to '23, on the first question, how have sales changed? You can obviously look back in 2021. That's looking back for the previous year, so that's looking back at 2020 during COVID. And we, when we had 32% of our businesses say sales had decreased, well, when you go back to '22 and '23, it's only 13 and then 14%. So, that's basically staying the same. So, you can see that the looking forward, everyone's viewpoint is very, very good. The majority of our businesses think sales are going to be better in the future. Over on the next page, what do you expect the economy to do? It's kind of interesting how back in 2021, people were expecting a very high percent increase in 2020, come out of COVID. Of course, 81% thought the economy was going to be better in the coming year. Last year, it dropped down to 71% thinking the economy was going to be better. And this year, while we said 61% think that it is going to be better, well, you can see that's a drop. We've gone from 81 to 71 to 61. So, the trend is down, looking forward, but still, over half of our businesses think the economy is going to do well next year. But, it, the trend is down. Next page, the number of employees you expect to hire. It's interesting. This is the number of employees you expect to hire. I would tell you anecdotally from talking to our businesses, we're still having trouble filling the positions that we have opened. That's not this question. That's just something that we know at the chamber. But, when you're looking forward to seeing how many you're going to hire from 2022 to 2023, basically, it's stayed the same, 44% in 2022 to 45% in 2023. People are still looking to increase the number of employees that they're going to hire in the coming year. And then, obviously, all the detail is below that. The next question, as I meant before, the quality of applicants. If you look in 2022, the average in good was 75%. In 2023, average of good is 78%, probably statistically close to the same. People generally are feeling good when you're talking about 75, 78% on the quality of applicants. So, they're pretty happy with that. And then, on the final page of the breakdown, the quality of life, that is kind, it's kind of interesting, because 87% said the quality of life was good or excellent. Last year, it was 88, but before that, in 2021, it was 93, and all the years before that has basically been in the 90s. So, there is a slight decrease on overall quality of life. That could, could have something to do with what we're going to talk about just a second on traffic or things like that, but still, 87% thinks good or excellent is the quality of life in Brazos County. All right. Something new on the next page we put for you. We took, and we've asked this question in the past, we've not presented this, in the results, the business issues and concern. We always ask the businesses, which of the following do you think are the biggest issues facing your business in 2023? So, they're looking forward for their concerns. Then, we grafted out across the bottom, and it's, it's pretty obvious, by far, the number one concern is the general economy. So, people, that is when they're looking at what their concern is going to be the coming year. The vast majority, 176, said the general economy. The number two answer was back to, was employment, and that's, I think, going back to what we said before about finding the right people to fill their jobs. And then, three and four, transportation and governmental regulation. So, those are the top four things our businesses are concerned about going into the future. Next page was a brand-new question that we asked, quality of safety. Comparing the past 12 months to the previous years, how would you rate the quality of safety and security in your business or neighborhood? Very, very happy to report, 94% said it was either very safe or relatively safe. 49% said very safe, 45% relatively safe, 5% replied not safe, with 2% not answering all. There's, there can be a rounding error on there by 1%, but 40, 94% felt that their businesses were safe and secure at the current time. And then, the last page that I'll present here today, I'm also very happy, it's our historically underutilized businesses. We asked them if our businesses we visited were a historically underutilized business, and we had 93 yeses, which was 13%. So, 13% of the businesses we visited identified as historically underutilized, and so, their results and their voices are in this survey, and we're pleased to report that to the court. That's my presentation on the 2023 Business Survey. Have to answer any questions, and I want to thank you all once again.
Questions?
Thank you for the Chamber doing this survey, and thanks to the volunteers who participated. Appreciate the update every year. It's always good information to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Glenn, thank you. Thank you for the role you play with the Chamber. You do a great job. We're looking forward to next year.
I appreciate that.
Okay. We will consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 31. Number four is approval to cancel the reg- Number four is approval to cancel the regular meeting on Commissioners' Court on Tuesday, July 4th due to a county holiday.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is approval to cancel regular meeting for Commissioners' Court on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, due to a lack of a quorum. Members of the court will be attending a conference.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We're trying to make up for time delay there.
Yeah, well, I was holding up just a little, just in case. I know that there's a little time lapse there, but I think it was unanimous.
Well, I've tried to handicap the time delay. We'll see how well that works out. But anyway, greetings from the Texas Association of Counties Conference of the Investment Academy.
All right. I think that was unanimous. Motion passes. Number six is approval of resolution on regulations for political signage on Brazos County-owned polling places.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
None motion carries.
I wanted to say that when they put in the T-post, they sometimes break sprinkler heads, and the signs get removed, and we don't know who sign it was to determine damages, and it gets expensive, so.
She's looking at me, Judge.
No, no. I was looking at Cheryl.
We shouldn't run so often. Do we vote on that?
Take the fifth.
Okay, motion pass. Number seven is approval of requested juvenile services for acceptance of $3,619 from Texas Education Agency to purchase remedial materials.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is approval of authorizing a county judge to sign the restrictive covenant for non-residential land use.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, give them more time. Yeah, it's unanimous. Nine is permission to advertise for auction of surplus property.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of change order CIP 21-634 to add additional safety walkway pads to be installed in Brazos County Detention Center.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is approval of Contract 23-122, project management software with Procore Technologies, Inc.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is approval of Contract 23-133, short-term detention juvenile offenders with Wharton County.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous. To approve. Number 13 is approval of Contract 23-134, short-term detention juvenile offenders with Victoria County.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approval of the following committee for RFP CIP 23-548, Brazos County Expo Complex Concrete Work.
Move approval, A through E, second.
Much made, seconded to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is permission to advertise CIP 23-548, Brazos County Expo Complex Concrete Work.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is approval of the following committee for RFQ CIP 23-600, bond-related engineering design services.
Move approval, A through F, second.
Much made, seconded to approve A through F, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is approval of the following committee for RFP 24-001, County Depository.
Move approval, A through F, second.
Much made, seconded to approve A through F, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is permission to advertise 24-001, County Depository.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is permission to advertise for bid 24-003, solid waste hauling, recycling, and citizen collection site trash pickup.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is approval of Contract 20, contract renewal, 24-014R, water treatment with Fort Bend Services.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is approval of assignment of vendor name change on Contract 24-014R from Fort Bend Services to Inc. to Global Water Technology.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is acceptance of a .054 acre drainage easement and a .005 acre temporary easement from Margie Envoy to be used for improvements to be made on Straub Road, sites located precinct 1.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number 23 is approval of final plat of Southern Point Subdivision, Section 106, 10.399 acres, Sterrett D. Smith League Survey, A-210, City College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located precinct 1.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 24 is approval of final plat of Wilson pasture lots 1 and 2, 10.014 acres, AD Lancaster Survey, A-150, Brazos County, Texas. Along with a request for a variance pertaining to the Brazos County subdivision regulations, Article 7, 2 and 7, site is located precinct 2. Move for approval?
Second. That was 12.014 acres. You said 10.
Okay, I'm sorry, 12.014. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 25 is approval of Treasury Report for April 2023.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 26 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A through G, second.
Much made, seconded to approve A through G, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 27 is budget limits, budget limits FY 2223, budget limits 36.01 through 36.11.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 28 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A and B, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 29 is payment claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8122709 through claim number 8122913 and claim number 9007750 and through claim number 9007821.
Move approval, second.
Much made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will skip down to number 32. Number 32 was acknowledgment of FY 202223 budget to actuarials by fund as of June 7, 2023, and an acknowledgment of FY 202223 contingency budget to actuarials as of June 7, 2023. 33 is juvenile director's report on inmate detention population. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 41 in juvenile detention at present time, 32 males, nine females, and we have 26 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. 34 is sure report on inmate population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Today, we have 702 in custody, 2, excuse me, 594 men, 108 women, 57 on electronic monitoring.
Numbers are going down slightly.
From last week, we went down about 22, which is nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
35 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Yes, sir. The Health and Safety Expo is Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Brazos Center. There'll be health assessments, safety demonstrations, backhoe, rodeo, snacks, and fun and prizes. So all employees see at the Brazos Center 10:00 to 2:00 on Thursday. And you get one hour administrative leave with pay for attendance, so do come.
Any other announcement of interest items or possible future agenda topics? Number 36 is call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Hearing none, we will move back up and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.129 of the Texas Government Code to consider with legal counsel issues regarding to potential agreement between the county and an interested business, interested entity to come into Brazos County for business purposes. We don't need any action on that, do we, Counselor? I think so. B is the Government Code 551.072 to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. C is the government, Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated in Contract A, and D would be the same with Contract B, and we do need action on that.
Judges and Commissioners, I have submitted two letters for these two items. It's my determination that deliberating in closed session is necessary, and doing it open would be detrimental to the interests of the county. Those letters have been filed with court.
Okay, we'll need a motion, a second, and then I think we need a announcement.
So move.
Second. Much made, seconded for the discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Motion passes. And then it, number E is Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment and employment evaluation and duties of the veteran service officer position, and F is Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment and employment evaluation, our duties of the general manager position of the Expo Complex and Brazos Valley Fair. And the time is 10:41. We'll need the court attorneys. Let's see, probably, I know that Kim needs to be in there. Let's see, for different ones, it's probably going to be different folks.
You need Katie.
Jonathan, the HR people?
I know for the two personnel action, we'll need HR in there for that, so if they'll kind of hang around. The upper ones, I know we need Budget Katie in there. Is there, do you think of anybody else that needs to be in?
Cheryl.
Oh, certainly Cheryl, yeah. I kind of include her with the court. So again, 10, it's 10:42, and we'll move into executive session.
You have to sign two things.
Okay.
I can hear him all the way down here.
We can hear him over here.
I can just hear his voice.
No, he's coming from my phone.
Okay, but I'm saying.
Yeah, but we can hear him.
Yeah, but can you put?
But we have a quorum.
Right, but he still can't participate in the vote.
You can't vote.
Yep, okay.
So emotional support.
We're going to go make a vote over that.
So is it? All right, so we're coming out of executive session. It's 12:12, and I think we have some action to take.
Yeah, I'm pleased to make the motion that we approve Jacqueline Foster as the new Director of the Expo Center effective immediately.
I'd second that motion.
I'd third it.
That's great. Motion made and seconded to appoint Jacqueline Foster, the new Executive Director of the Expo and Fair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And certainly, there's none. Jack, we're looking forward to working with you. You're going to do a great job. Everybody out there respects and have expressed a confidence in your ability to lead, and so we're looking forward to it. Congratulations. All right, next item is to adjourn.